First item of business, 6B. Consider and act on a petition request by Republic Services to increase the contract solid waste rate charged to the city of Marshall. Gene Keenan.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Council. I'm, once again, coming up on my request for the adjustment on the rate, the 2%, which actually equates to about 16 cents per household, per month. And I apologize for this being my second time because last time I did not have enough information for everyone. And I feel like a meeting that I recently had with Mr. Hughes, he called up and he was very inquisitive. I had to present a lot of information to him. And of course, I know his history. I know that he has extensive knowledge in the garbage business. He's ridden on trash trucks himself. He's worked at two different cities where he handled the trash sanitation department himself. So I wanted to make sure that everything I gave him was accurate and correct. And I think that in his report, he was convinced of the need for the adjustment. And this time, he is actually making a recommendation that we receive the 2%. And a lot of it, you know, that I'm requesting for is the, you know, we go so far above and beyond on things. And it's also because of the EPA regulations, which I did present him the book on the EPA regulations for diesel trucks, which is what we use. And it's, I think, 36 pages or something like that. It's a lot. It was a lot of information in there. But also the fact that of the unusual circumstances as far as cost that's been involved because of increased volume and just, it's just a lot of other things as well. As I brought our route manager with me the last time, just to back me up, to make sure that, you know, he could verify that he has been on me for several months. You know, what can we do in Marshall? What can we change? You know, it's killing us. And as I also brought up at the last council meeting. And I did, just, you know, I don't want it to be hung up just on the actual government regulations. Because on the contract, it said, on the rate adjustment petition, where I'm allowed to petition the council for extra, for the extra other than the CPI, it says contractor may petition the city for rate adjustments occasioned by extraordinary events on the basis of unusual charges and the contractor's costs of operations, including but not limited to new amended or revised laws, ordinances, or regulations of government. So which request shall not be unreasonably denied. So it's not just the government regulations on the trucks. It's the other circumstances as well that I'm petitioning for. So once again, I'm asking if we can pass this adjustment, keep us going solid, and being able to provide the best service we possibly can for the citizens of Marshall. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Based on Mr. Hughes' recommendation and the additional information from Mr. Keenan, I would like to make a motion that we approve the petition by Republic Services.
All right, we have a motion. All right, we have a motion for Commissioner Carter to approve, a second from Commissioner Moon. Any discussion?
Yes. And I want to say I appreciate, I don't know if, there's Gene over there. I appreciate Republic. Y'all have been, you know, a good service provider to the city for all these years and everything. And so I don't have any issue with you guys as far as the service you provide. But the problem that I have with this particular proposal tonight, and I can't tell from the information that's provided whether it's reasonable or not. So I can't make an informed decision based on the information that's provided. We're looking at, you know, cost of a truck added here, that kind of thing. But I don't know what kind of impact that has on your operations here and how that compares to other things that transpire. The purpose of the increase is to, you know, you can get an increase up to 3% of the CPI adjustment if things go up. Your costs have gone down for fuel costs, I presume. And so y'all probably bid this thing anticipating higher fuel costs than what you're experiencing. And so, and that's probably, I'm guessing, a significant amount of money in savings to y'all here. And I don't know how, based on this information that you've given us, there's not enough information here to really be able to weigh and factor in how this EPA is really impacting you one way or the other. I'm not saying it's not. I'm not saying that it's, but I can't tell from what we have to look at and work with here tonight whether it's reasonable or not, whether your request is reasonable. You're asking us to allow y'all to go up on our ratepayers. And I'm, you know, Republic is a big company. And I feel like y'all are making a lot of money out of this contract. It's the biggest contract that I think the city has with any one individual. And, you know, it was bid based on y'all's projections. And I know y'all had to have some kind of margin factor in there that y'all, when y'all bid this, to give you some cushion in your bid price to, in case there were some adverse changes in the economy out there. So, you know, I would like to have more information in order to make this decision. I'm not saying I would vote against it after I get more information. I might join with your view and say yes, it's warranted. But I have to be accountable to the citizens of Marshall. And there's not enough information provided here to make an informed and reasonable decision about this. And so, you know, that's my take on it at this point. I would like to have more time and some more information from y'all, since this wouldn't take effect until 2016. So it's not like it has to be done tomorrow or the next day. So we've got, you know, at least room for another meeting in here to, for y'all to provide us some information and make your case a little more assertive about how it's impacting your company in a little more detail with a schedule of costs or something, how it's impacting you adversely. But right now, just to tell me that, you know, the truck costs more, the EPA regulations are costing more, the truck costs $15,000 or $17,000 more, I don't, that doesn't tell me how it's going to impact your operations here overall.
Mr. Hughes, do you have the exact, I believe, I know the number, I believe it's $1.92 a year. What's the exact amount that this would impact each ratepayer, home, you know, individual ratepayer in the city of Marshall?
Well, there's so many different numbers on the commercial side. The really the easiest one, the pinpoint, would be the residential customers. And you're talking about just 2%. Right now, they're paying $10.40. That's what's left worth the residents by. So 2% of that.
So approximately 21 cents a month? So about $2.50 a year, ballpark?
And, you know, my reasoning for wanting to approve this, and I, you know, I've, you know, I'm not the businessman on the dais here. But what I do know is that the cost of business have gone up. Mr. Keenan's shown us that their costs have gone up. And what I do know is that that's a company that, you know, after he left and we denied him last time around, there was talk on during the last meeting about asking them if they'd be willing to partner with us on a project. It's my understanding that there's a check for about $21,000 every year that they donate. If we're looking at an increased contract cost of $42,000, that's half, their donation that they make already is half of that rate increase. We, you know, we're wanting more information on the impact that, you know, the economy's had on their company. My concern is what's the impact that if we don't do this, what's the impact going to be on the residents of this community? This is a company that does so much extra already. And, you know, I think at the last meeting, we discussed, that is a business tactic that most, most large companies, you know, utilize, kind of that goodwill gesture. But I believe that we've definitely got more than our fair share of that goodwill. And I'd hate to see that end and cost us overall. And I think $2.50 a year, 21 cents a month. I realize that if it was $2.50 a month, I believe there's some people in our community who would seriously struggle with coming up $2.50 a month. But it's $2.50 a year. That's 21 cents a month. Let's keep that in mind. That's what we're talking about on the ratepayers in Marshall, Texas. And the flip side of that is potentially losing us, you know, some of the goodwill gestures that we received from a great partner for the last 20, I mean, how many years have they been with us?
So you're saying that you're willing to set a precedent of allowing a company to come in that has a contract, that was awarded a contract under competitive bid price, to come in and tell us that they want to go up on the rate without substantially documenting, adequately documenting, how that impacts their bottom line after they've gone through a competitive bid process with us? You're, and without demonstrating how it, whether they're overall negatively impacted because the Consumer Price Index did go down? And so you're saying you're willing to go ahead and approve that just to maintain a goodwill concept with them instead of, and I would submit that the impact to our citizens is costly. And I just can't see, given that, until they make a case for what they, why they need it. It's required, if you go to a rate case hearing with a utility in Austin on electric rates or gas rates or whatever, they have to come in and make a case. They have to come in and show how things are impacting one way or the other negatively. And the information that's provided here is not that kind of information. But Republic's a big company. They're able to do that. And if, you know, if they're losing money, if they're, you know, having a loss under their contract with the city of Marshall, they can come in and demonstrate that to us.
Well, I'd like to say that the contract, if I'm not mistaken, was in 2013. With our economy, everything goes up. And that's what, almost two years, 21 cents a month. And again, Republic has been good to Marshall. Anytime we ask Mr. Republic for any assistance, they are there. Sometimes we don't even have to ask. And I want to thank them for Newtown Association. They're always yearly with us when we're cleaning up our neighborhood. They've been, even if we give this 2% increase, we're still below the other bid.
Considerably.
Considerably below. So I don't want to lose Republic. In fact, I had asked the staff for a recommendation for a citywide cleanup before this came up. And I do appreciate the staff bringing us their recommendation. I do have a nonprofit organization that want to assist in your decision, but I wanted to go a little further. I will, when I say citywide cleanup, I would like for Republic and its staff to partner to have in our water bill a weekly, monthly notice, what can and can't be put out front and give us days it can be picked up. That is citywide for all of our citizens, along with the staff's recommendation. I appreciate Republic and I'm willing to pay my 21 cents per month for this continued service with Republic, which is still 2% below the other bid. Thank you.
And, you know, thank for me, Mr. Smith, Commissioner Smith, you mentioned, you know, in your opinion, they have not proven a reasonable case as to why. To me, it's reasonable. His request is reasonable. And the thing for me is, I'm not a shareholder in Republic. I'm not, you know, I reasonably see that there has been an increase on their, on their side.
But you don't know.
My job is to, as Commissioner here, is to make the decision, I feel is the best decision for this city. And, you know, if we're talking about an astronomical increase, I'd be right with you. I'd vote no. But we're talking about an amount that is minimal. And when you look at, you look at the things that are provided to this city by this company, I think that the amount of the increase is worth the change in the cost. And that's, that's my opinion.
Well, I would submit that you don't have enough information to know whether it is reasonable or warranted based on what they presented to us. And you want to do, you said what's best for the citizens of Marshall. Well, we did that through a competitive bid contract that they were awarded, that they went through a competitive bid price scenario for to come up with. And I just think that right now, it's in the best interest of the citizens of Marshall to ask for more information and have them make their case to us as to, you know, why they need this rate increase. Otherwise, I think we're setting a bad precedent of allowing companies to come in here and on minimal evidence with a few isolated rate hike costs, or excuse me, costs here and there in their operations, without showing, without making a case for their overall need. We're setting the wrong precedent to allow companies to come in here and ask for increases in contracts after they've gone through a competitive rate, excuse me, a competitive bid process for the, for the contract to be awarded to them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I was going to ask one.
Could we take it to a vote?
No, because I haven't had a chance to say anything.
And I got one question for Mr. Keenan.
There's no reason to, to not allow everybody to have their say.
How many rate increases have you had over your area in the last couple of weeks? I'm sure you've visited quite a few cities with the same request.
Yep. Marshall is a little bit different because I was trying to help Marshall back whenever we did this. I didn't realize all these years that your budget went from January, started in January, where a lot of other people start in October. So what we did to help was we chose, we used the March, the March CPI, so that it gives the city of Marshall plenty of time to do their budget before the next year starts.
Right.
Most every other city I have is October 1. In fact, Marshall's the only January one I know of. So that's the one that I'm working on right now because of the deadline of trying to get it, because I had to have it submitted by June 1st, which I did for Marshall, even though it doesn't take effect till January. But that gives the city plenty of time to do their budget and know what they, to expect the next year. The others, I did recently do one in Kilgore because their contract, I had to give them 90 days' notice. So as the time comes up for me to be asking for these, I'll be doing it. But, but Marshall was the most critical one because it is a large contract. And when we're behind on it, it drags the whole division down faster because of that. But, you know, I've given a lot of information, and it's at a limit right now to where it bumps the proprietary information. I can't give any more information about detailed cost of itemized this and that for the competitor, for my competitor to come in here and ask for a copy of it. I can't do that. My company won't let me do that, nor do I think they would spend the resources over a 16 cent a month rate increase to do that. So that's kind of where I'm at on that. I've given lots of information here and, and just being able to talk to an experienced staff member in this, that's done what we do, that sees the extra. And that we did save a little bit on the fuel, but we also based our bid on getting at least a 2% per year over five years increase. Last year, it was only 1%. So I'm already 1% behind. If I don't get this one, that means we're 3% behind on our projections. And 3% on a $2.2 million contract is significant, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Hughes, I don't mean to put you in the middle of a, and it'll crossfire here, but would you be willing to share what, why your recommendation is to grant the increase?
Well, I do understand the reasoning on the diesel trucks. Our last set of dump trucks we bought were gasoline. For that reason, we didn't want to go with the additional costs on the dump trucks. But Gene is correct. I've been dealing with garbage utilities, ours, other cities, in Nacogdoches, we have, the city still has, the utility and the landfill. So I mean, I've got some experience from top to bottom. And it's not just the truck cost. It's just like with us, other costs, supply costs, chemical costs, oil costs. So, you know, I can understand, fully understand the proprietary information he's talking about and how if you get into more detail, then someone can ask for an open record request and then you turn in that over to a competitor. So I understand you have to be, you have to be reasonable in the request. And I feel like they've been reasonable based on the other two letters. I also had some information that he'd put in there too, about other costs that they're trying to control. So it was a combination of all that.
Well, I've got to say, I don't believe that the information that they need to provide us to make an informed decision falls anywhere near something that's proprietary. And they, we've given them a monopoly to operate here in the city of Marshall. They don't have any competition here. And it just doesn't make sense to me to act on this, on the information that we have here tonight is woefully insufficient to make an informed, intelligent decision about what we're doing. And that's what I think, you know, we should do as a commission when we're looking after the citizens of Marshall's best interest. We need to be fully informed on an issue before we vote on it. And that's, that's my concern is, I don't want to vote on it because I don't have enough information to know whether it's a good thing or a bad thing to do, not just for citizens of Marshall, but whether it's really warranted or not. There's just no way to know.
We all have the same concern.
And, you know, other cities, they have different contracts to suggest that they've done due diligence on this. I guarantee you, there's not enough information here for anybody to do due diligence and so on. And I guarantee you, they haven't done any due diligence on any of them that have made adjustments to any of their contracts. And we've seen what kind of trouble some of these cities get into when they start following the lead of companies like Centerpoint or Swebco and making adjustments to their contracts without fully considering all the facts. They give away a lot of stuff without knowing what they're doing.
Now, those are, I know, but those are utilities and this is a private company.
It is, it is. But they still, but the analogy is, is they have a monopoly to operate here in Marshall. And there's no competition here.
And I have the same concern, and we all do. We, all of you, our staff, we all have the citizens' concern at heart. And I did when I looked at this also. You know, we're paying less now than we were 2010. When this was bid out, it was, it actually came in lower than what we were paying. We didn't keep that 2%, we actually gave it back to the residents. Our costs went down, so we reduced the cost. So, you know, we tried to keep the cost down, even though we're already the lowest in the region.
But that's, that's good on the commission at the time and the city staff at the time, that we took the trouble to have the contract bid and made arrangements to have these services provided at a, at a good price. That's not an argument to, to break a contract now arbitrarily. I think that, to my concern is that, that we're confusing different issues. Because I think it should be made clear and emphasized that there's no question, Republic is a wonderful, great corporate citizen. And Gene Keenan in particular is a tremendous, important part of our community. I mean, those aren't, those aren't the issues that I think that we're discussing. And, you know, I'm hearing an undercurrent here that if we don't grant this rate increase, for some reason, our relationship with Republic might be compromised. I don't buy that at all. I think that Republic is going to continue to be a happy, constructive partner for the city of Marshall, irregardless of what we decide to do. What we're, what we're trying to decide as commissioners representing the citizens, not Republic, what's the right thing to do on behalf of our constituents? So what are the facts? The facts are, fuel costs have gone down. The CPI has gone down. So I don't know what you're referring to or what we're talking about when we talk about the cost of business. Macro speaking, those have gone down. Now, we've asked questions about trying to drill into it to make an informed decision on why this rate increase is justified. Largely, the response has been, well, that information's proprietary.
I've gotten everything.
And that's understandable. But the bottom line, and I don't want to, in the interest of time, dwell on it, but, you know, we have to make the right decision for the citizens of Marshall. And the residential rate is really only one rate. We have to remember that. There's multiple rates, the construction costs, the other, the other ratepayers that could be affected differently. And so I'd love to consider this if, if information is available that's compelling, that can really justify, justify making this rate increase. But my first job is to represent the constituents. And until, until that, that information is made available, I have to, I have to suggest either we wait and get that information or oppose this.
Just out of curiosity, how long is this contract for? When is the terms of it in and we have to rebid the process?
Five years.
Five years and then what, three years?
Recurring, recurring three-year.
Because, and I, just from your spreadsheet you sent us this, this evening, is it really true that we were, that they're, they came in almost $60,000 a month less than the next highest bidder?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
From looking at the spreadsheet you had sent, sent via email to everybody earlier this afternoon?
Right.
It showed that Ally's approximate monthly cost was about $176,000 a month, where the next bidder was $233,000.
Right.
Now, does that put us in a situation if we don't approve this rate increase from looking at the constituents of Marshall, that in two years, it puts us in an adversarial position with, with Republic? I mean, we've, there's such a huge margin in difference in cost between the next, the next low bid. Is that?
I can't answer for them. I couldn't answer that question.
Because from a long-term perspective, that could.
Is there an out in the contract? Yes, there's an out in the contract. You know, we have an out there, an out with notice. But, you know, this is a huge contract for them.
One other thing to consider is, too, is, I mean, you know, they bid for the contract price they got. If their costs actually went down, do you think they would come here asking to lower their rates to the citizens of Marshall? You know, I think generally speaking, they need to live with their contract unless they can show some extenuating circumstance that would invoke the need to give them this increase under this provision in the contract. And again, we don't have that tonight.
You know, I, and just so everyone understands, there's additional information in our packets, but over the last several days, there have been emails back and forth with more additional information. I feel that it's reasonable. I feel like there's several other commissioners who feel it's reasonable. The man who last, you know, two meetings ago said, Mr. Hughes, who said, I don't feel like there's enough information to, to recommend this, has now said, I've got enough information for me to recommend it. I feel like our commission spends, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say, I feel, I'm going to say it. I feel like our commission spends a lot of time on issues. And Mr. Hughes comes to us and he provides us with millions of dollars worth of, you know, street repairs and other things that we need to get done. And we say, Mr. Hughes is the expert. I trust Mr. Hughes' information that he's provided us, and we approve it. The same man comes to us and we're talking about $42,000, which isn't chump change, it's money, it's taxpayer money. But the same man says, I think we need to go ahead and approve this. And with all of the information we've had, and there's more dialogue between the commissioners over this issue than over a lot of the street issues that we've talked about. And we say, we need more information. Mr. Keenan, and to the rest of you here, I apologize that we're beating this issue to death. I think, to me, it's clear. And there's a motion, and it's been said that we don't want to vote on it. There's a motion on the floor.
There's a second.
So there's a second, so there has to be a vote on it.
Commissioner Carter, I've got a question for you. I want to ask you a question. I'd like to ask you a question. What new information do you have in the, in emails that you're talking about? What emails are you talking about that have new information other than what's in our packet tonight? Because I haven't seen any new information provided in any emails other than the information to make the decision on. I've seen some dialogue back and forth about it, but I haven't seen any new kind of information. And I don't think our job is to rubber stamp what the city staff brings to us every time. We have an oversight function here.
All right, 100% agree.
And I don't care whether it's $1,000 or $1 million. I think we have an obligation to review and look over these things.
All right. In our last meeting, Mr. Smith, the commission asked for, I need more information. We've had two weeks. We said, well, two weeks?
And we don't have it.
A week? Has anyone called and specified what information you need?
I think we're all going in the same direction, so let's just call this thing to question. I called a question.
All question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Board. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Borisman and Commissioner Smith voted opposed. Motion carries. Next item of business.